... And that's what's on here. We'll get this Lady's Publicary started.
That's fine, it has a very clear monitor. Yeah, that's different. Beautiful. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number one, VSA number 11407-PC. The applicant, Eric Palatnick, PC, the community board number seven.
Hello, good morning, Eric Palatnick. And glad we were able to update everyone on all our favorite sports teams in New York and their actions recently. And thanks for having us here for a great application for a building that was built ten years ago in Whitestone. And it's called Kitty Academy, who is the main tenant within the building. It's a three-story, fifteen thousand square foot building, and it's under approval from the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals because it's located within a manufacturing zoning district. So you are not allowed to have schools within a manufacturing zoning district. Even though it's located in a manufacturing zoning district, it's really a residential district. And I'm sorry, I don't have the PowerPoint to show you, but there's some of the application materials you can see there. It's in a residential area of Whitestone, really. It's on the edge of a manufacturing district that was historically mapped along the waterfront, which has been rezoned back a few years ago. But it's really, if you can see there, it's in red on the map you're looking at, it's at the corner of Cul-de-sac of an L. And it's all basically homes around it. So even though we're presenting to you an application for a property that's in a manufacturing zoning district, and we're asking you to amend the approval for the daycare, which needs a special permit because it's in the manufacturing district, I wanted to set the picture for you that you're not in a gritty industrial area, but rather, you know, very pretty neighborhood in Whitestone that has got a lot of nice homes around it, but who's more going to go up around it? And because Queens is such a great place to live, our student business sports teams are good, there are a lot of children. And there's a public school nearby, and those students, I was just with President Eric Adams yesterday in Brooklyn, he made a statement that most of the children get, their formative years are imprinted in ages zero through three. And this is the type of place that does that. They take babies from infants, primarily through ages five years old. They could, they used to go up to twelve, but they're primarily up to five years old. And they have a pre-K program within the building, and that's the service they provide. Every that goes to their facility is local. They are Queens-centric. It's a franchise. The people that operate it have two in Queens. The other one is on Parsons Boulevard in Flushing, so relatively close. And there's a huge demand, huge, huge, huge demand. The reason we're asking, what we're asking of you is because the building is there, it's a three-story building, and it's, as I said before, it's fifteen thousand square feet. Kitty Academy, which is what's at issue, historically had eleven thousand square feet within the fifteen thousand square foot building. They'd like to ask now to enlarge the space within the building, not make the building bigger, just take more space. So there was an office in the building before with them, a shared space, they're taking over that space, they'd like to, and take about two thousand square feet and turn it into a play area for them that they don't have. And I can show you on the plans, but if you look at the third floor of the plans, you'll see a beautiful, I'll take the plan sheet if you want. They're creating a, I think, eight of fifteen. Or eight of fifteen is probably existing, that's existing third floor, excuse me, fifteen of fifteen, I apologize, that was existing conditions. Fifteen of fifteen, which if you want to compare it to eight of fifteens, if you wanted to flip back and forth, on eight, it shows there are offices there, where it says multi-purpose room for daycare. And if you look at fifteen, it shows you that it's the multi-purpose room for daycare. So the idea is to take the spaces currently offices, convert it to a multi-purpose room. It'll give the children a place to play inside as a recreational area inside, which is all part of their curriculum. Those are the only changes that are occurring to development, not getting any bigger. There's no parking, there's a, excuse me, I should say that, there's a low parking requirement for the daycare use, it's required to have eight parking spaces. Actually has a lower parking requirement than the commercial space, so there's no impact on parking. When we were at the community board, it was very well supported, as you can see from the proposed recommendation, I think it was like thirty-three to three. And I brought my daughter there that night because she's seven years old, and she got a kick out of scene because they thought it would be an easy one. But when we got there, Gene Kelty brought up the fact, everybody, that years ago, it was a little controversial because of the traffic. And there was a little bit of a conversation about traffic, so I just want to make you aware of it. It's a busy place in the morning, when there are people dropping off their kids, but it works. And the fact that it works is shown by the thirty-three, the vote substantially in favor. A lot of those people that spoke about it were very local folks. Gene Kelty had some comments, and I think he was one of the people that voted against it. And it's a funny point for those who know Gene, who I love and respect tremendously. On the way out, my daughter, as you would describe, a teacher in school turns around and goes, "Boy, that man, Gene, he's very hard." And I told Gene the joke, he got a kick out of it. But the point I'm saying is that I want to tell you that it was very well supported, but there was, were a couple people against it, and one of them was Gene Kelty, and I think that name has more of a resonance, maybe than some others may. So I wanted to make you aware of that in case you might be confused, Mr. Kelty. Having said that, I don't think he was that opposed to it, I think he accepted the fact that schools, that's been a good use in the neighborhood. And the owners are, you know, the building owner himself operates out of that building, he has a small office left in that building, and his name's Tim O'Sullivan. He's developed a couple of houses in Whitestone right now that, it was broken for you, that very well received, there's a GCL application, so he's a very well-known developer in the neighborhood, he's very well-liked. That's our application, I think it's positive.
Thank you, Mr. Palatnick.
Thank you.
More people should be as candid as your seven-year-old.
Yes, yes, that's, Gene really appreciated that kick. Is that good? I want to be hard.
Just a few questions and clarification. So currently, the third floor is still just offices?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask what was there?
I don't know the type of office that was there, it was just a generic, it was an office use, I don't know the nature of the business that was...
How long has it been vacant?
I don't know, I'm not privy to that information.
But you haven't yet activated it?
No, it's not set up for the school. It is vacant now, but it's not set up for the school right now.
And how long do you anticipate that to take?
Oh, the build-up? Three weeks, it's not much, it's just the interior walls.
The existing, if you said it was Kitty Academy?
Kitty Academy is the name.
The existing daycare that operates, are there UPTC seats on that?
Yes.
Do you know how many?
I don't know how many, I can give you the exact, I can get the exact number for you, I can get in touch with the operator, so I can give you that number.
And with the expansion into the fourth floor, you said that would be play areas, would that open more seats up?
No, there's no, it's just accommodating the current use, it's just not as desirable right now, its current layout without that play area, it would be with a play area.
So it does not accommodate additional students?
No, it's not being done to accommodate any more students to the space.
Is there a, I was about to make that clarification, some of the materials I have is made consistent with the... I think there are... Okay.
So this is... What you're probably reading, if I can read into it because I'm familiar with the application, is the plan is broken down, and it shows within the plan the number of students that could be accommodated in each space. So, for example, when you go through the space, probably on page fifteen, if I go off memory, yeah, sure, on fifteen, it tells you sixty children, twelve staff members in that multi-purpose room. Those are the same sixty children that might be at another point in the day downstairs in another room. It's simultaneous, it's not simultaneous occupancy. It's like this room, you move out of your office to come have the hearing in here, that's how the children will be. It's not as if you created this room, and all of a sudden you find twenty more staff members in your team to come work within the space. Same concept here at the daycare.
Is there capacity for another twenty-five new students?
There is capacity in the building for this, but that is not the intention. It's an educational institution, it's got a program. The purpose here, we'd be very transparent, if we wanted more space for the students, we would show you there's more space for the students. They're licensed by the New York State Department of Education, they're fully regulated, they are knowing, and give you any affirmation you'd like from them as to what their intentions are, so you can be comfortable with that.
I think the reason why I asked, because twenty-five is not, it's a bit of a nominal number, but also more concerns expressed about the traffic.
Of course.
And we're talking about twenty-five.
Yes, and listen, I've done this for a very long time, there may be other people that are, that may in the future, or may have considered to change it and use it in another way than we're representing. I'd be happy to give you a letter of, that test the fact, the number of students who are intended to stay at that facility.
And how many children?
Hundred and ninety.
Hundred and ninety?
Hundred and ninety.
So with the expansion, it's not...
It's not increasing, not increasing. Hundred and ninety students, forty-six staff members, none of those numbers are changing. Everything's intended to pretty much operate exactly as is.
You said three members, three voting against?
I believe it was three.
Can you give us my side as to why they...
I gave you my best. Just gave you my best. It was really Gene was everything, was a...
Gene has a lot of...
Yeah, well, Gene has some followers.
So the building that was built ten years ago, that was originally built as a school facility?
Yes, yes, it was function-built, it was subject to the VSA approval before it was built. It's a beautiful building, but I don't know if it answers to you. It's done nicely.
Another question is, does the school need any kind of trouble, or is there any kind of...
They have staff members that are out there to try to help people. It's difficult when there's pickup and drop-offs, just like in front of any school. There is, there's an area that's a carve-out that was subject to the VSA approval. That area will probably be used more as a carve-out when the street is open one day, when the development down the block, that's in the M-zone now, ultimately something that's built there. Right now, this is sort of a dead end. So the carve-out that was created, although it's a nice carve-out, it's sort of a carve-out, a little bit of cars do what they should do, it should circulate all the way around. So when people pull up, the cars usually use that hole, there's a commercial building right next door to us, it doesn't have heavy traffic, and the parents usually use those areas as a pickup place. The nice part about it is that this, the neighbors seem to be okay with it, we're not getting any complaints recently. There were complaints when it first opened ten years ago, there's been none recently at all. And the way it works out, the roadway there is rather wide, so there's room for cars.
Okay, so, but you're saying the school has to get outside?
They bring people out to help people, yeah, sure, they shepherd people out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, thanks a lot, enjoy the day.
And with that, we conclude item number one, number two, calendar. Calendar number two, VSA number two zero one nine one five, PC, the applicant, AICMLP, community board number five.
Good morning, Nora Martins from Acreman LLP for the applicant. I'm also joined by James Cokely, representing the owner. He's available to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer today.
I'm sorry, I pulled a jury.
Nora Martins from Acreman LLP. No problem. So here today to also discuss a school special permit from the VSA. Our project is a new special permit, though, not an amendment on an existing special permit. So we're seeking the special permit pursuant to section seventy-three dash nineteen to permit development of a new school here at a daycare facility on a site located at seventy-nine dash forty Cooper Avenue in community board five. The existing zoning is M-one-one, so a school, new school through school use, which includes daycares not permitted as of right, requires a special permit from the Board of Standards and Appeals. You can hear, see here, the site location, looking on the south side of Cooper Avenue, between Seventy-Ninth Place and Eightieth Street. The site is very large, it's about eighty-four thousand square feet. Currently, an as-of-right self-storage facility, use group sixteen, is being constructed, five stories, towards the rear of the site. You can see the site has a long frontage on Cooper Avenue, and then it extends fairly deep back into the adjacent M-one-one zoning district. So while it's all on the zoning lot, there'll be separate tax lots, separate entries, essentially totally functioning as separate buildings and lots for all intents and purposes. So you can see here, it's a little hard, might be easier to see on the printout you have in front of you, the site's location within the M-one-one zoning district. It's actually right on the border of an R-four zoning district and an R-four-one zoning district that are adjacent to the site directly across Cooper Avenue, and then immediately to the east as well. So the self-storage facility is located on the side of the site, it's closer to the existing manufacturing uses, and the proposed daycare, which will be part of a new building that also contains some commercial use, is located right on Cooper Avenue in the more residential neighborhood. Cooper Avenue here, you can see the site in a little more detail, and you can see also the existing residential uses adjacent. Cooper Avenue is a very commercial corridor in this neighborhood, a lot of local retail and restaurant-type uses, and particularly in this stretch of Cooper Avenue, there are a lot of child-friendly uses. You have the Artistic Stitch Indoor Sports Complex, which is at seventy-nine oh eight Cooper Avenue, Triumph Gymnastics, Party Solvers of Chament, and the Elite Dance Academy. So it's a neighborhood that has a lot of children, a lot, this daycare facility would fit in well with all of those other child-friendly uses. And Children of America, which is the proposed daycare operator here, identify a need for additional daycare facilities in this neighborhood, and unfortunately, finding a site where they could, of sufficient size, where they could build a new facility that really meets their needs, their programmatic needs for a daycare facility, where it's permitted as of right in a residential district turned up empty. So this site, beside the M-one zoning, was perfect for their proposed development, leading to the, this application for a special permit from the VSA. Just another image showing the site. The upper right-hand corner is where the proposed daycare facility will be located on Cooper Avenue. Some photos here of the site now, you can see the under-construction self-storage facility. The proposed development will be a one- and two-story community facility commercial building, fifteen thousand square feet of total floor area. Eleven thousand square feet of that will be community facility floor, which would be for the daycare facility, which includes fifteen classrooms, a fenced rooftop playground, and then the remainder of the building will be nearly four thousand square feet of commercial floor area in the adjacent one-story portion of the building. They'll provide thirty-two accessory parking spaces behind the daycare facility. Will also have fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen parking spaces in the parking lot for the self-storage building. It's a total of forty-six parking spaces for the zoning lot. Only twenty-eight spaces are required, so the parking that's provided on-site exceeds the minimum zoning requirement by fourteen spaces. Just a little bit of background about Children of America, the program serves children from six weeks to twelve years. They operate from six AM to six-thirty PM on weekdays. This facility anticipates approximately a hundred sixty-seven children at full capacity, including infant groups, toddler, two-year-old, preschool groups, one pre-K group, they will participate in the universal pre-K program, that'll be approximately twenty students, and one school-age group, which is the smallest, you know, the older kids are the smallest demographic served by the daycare. There'll be approximately thirty-two instructors and five staff, and will first comply with Article forty-seven of the New York City Health Code for daycare facilities. So images showing the proposed building. In blue, in the two-story portion will be proposed daycare, the one-story portion will be the commercial portion of the building, which is not subject to this application. And then behind it in white is the self-storage facility. The site plan also showing the location of the proposed daycare in relation to the parking spaces, which will be accessed from Cooper Avenue, separate curb cut, separate parking area from the proposed self-storage facility. Want to make sure that, you know, those uses are separate to avoid any conflict between student, children arriving for the daycare facility. Zoomed-in shot here of the proposed daycare, on the ground floor, and the second floor, and the playground, which will be fenced in, will be on the rooftop of the one-story commercial portion of the building. Some elevation showing the proposed development. And then, as part of the VSA special permit application, and, you know, just part of Children of America's food practice, want to ensure that access to the site is safe. Here, for a daycare, unlike a school, all of the children will be arriving with a parent or caregiver. And they won't be traveling by themselves, but it's still important to ensure safety. So we've had Philip and Bevan Associates took a look at traffic safety measures that they would recommend just to ensure safe access to school. You can see here some proposed school zone signage, as well as some proposed high-visibility crosswalks that would be added in the area. These measures are subject to review by DOT School Safety Division, they're currently under review as part of the VSA process. Community board five voted unanimously in favor of the special permit application, provided that safe pedestrian and traffic measures are provided. So as we discussed with the community board, we've been meeting, DOT is obviously reviewing the school, their school safety division is reviewing the VSA application, but we've also been meeting separately, Project Civil Engineer has been meeting separately with DOT to discuss some of the other concerns about traffic on Cooper Avenue that were raised by the community board. And we also, just last week, have a letter in support from Councilmember Holden, I'll just submit a copy to that. That concludes our presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Ms. Martins. Do you say the UPTC is...
About twenty, that's the anticipated number.
Are there some other sites that Children of America operate, or operate in Queens?
Yeah, so they're a national daycare provider, they have sixty-four locations in twelve states. In Queens specifically, they have a location in Jackson Heights, and also one in Queens Village. And they're currently planning to open a third location in Bellrose. Do you want the addresses for the locations?
So this, including Bellrose and Little Village, that would make four up?
This would be their fourth location in Queens, correct?
And did you say that parking requirement is forty-six?
The parking requirement is twenty-eight spaces.
Twenty-eight.
Forty-six spaces are provided on these zoning lot.
And so we anticipate that forty-six would accommodate instructors and staff?
Yes, only, Children of America's other locations include, only a fraction of their staff drive to work, but this would accommodate all of those staff that do drive, and it would also accommodate parents that are there for five minutes, basically pull in, drop off, and leaving their children.
What's anticipated in the one-story commercial spaces?
There is no tenant yet for that space, I think, having some, the community board had expressed previously some interest in that health-related facility, whether it's urgent care, something like that, so that's, you know, something that the owner is looking into. It's, it's, right now it's a four thousand square foot space, it could be split into two, two thousand square feet spaces, you know, it can be subdivided for multiple times.
And is this location close to the at little shops that has that apart?
Relatively close, yes, yeah. I don't know exactly how close they are nearby.
Is it on that map?
Hmm, let's see.
Or is it, is it all...
It's not on that, no, no, I think...
So far enough to help them out?
No, I don't think, I think it's north, what, northeast.
Northeast.
Yeah? Sorry, I don't have the exact location.
This sounds like the conversation's supposed to be, you know, the protective, or the ...
Yes.
...down the signage and...
Yes, actually, we met with them on April fourteenth, and they said they would review further, and they provided some request for additional information, so we're still working with them back and forth.
And should this application, how soon can you anticipate the daycare facility to be up and operational?
That actually, I'm not sure. James, can you answer that question?
Sure.
Would you mind? Yes, sorry. Thank you. I didn't understand.
James Cokely, on behalf of the owner, CS Cooper Avenue LLC, yes, our goal would certainly be to have them in for the twenty-twenty school year.
Twenty-eight, twenty-one? Twenty-twenty, twenty-two?
Yes, correct, yeah, September of twenty-twenty, correct, correct.
Thank you.
Did you say the building is under construction?
The self-storage facility is under construction. The, no, we haven't started any construction on the daycare.
The only question is, the daycare itself, is there, are there any entrances located on Cooper Avenue?
There is an entrance on Cooper Avenue, just a second means of egress. The main entrance is behind the building, off the parking lot.
So if a parent wanted to drop off on Cooper Avenue, would they...
They have to walk back, I'll show you on the site plan.
I see the main entry is at the rear.
Right, right, so the, the site plan, there is, it's hard to see here, there's a sidewalk along the side of the building, where, you know, a parent could walk along to the back to the main entrance, which is, you can see the elevator bank right there.
So you're saying they would have to walk back, but there's no direct entry to Cooper Avenue?
No, that would just be an emergency exit only.
Okay, so I imagine most parents would probably just go to the main entry.
Right, I think they're anticipating most parents will be dropping children off by car.
And will there be school staff out there, because it is a parking lot, so...
Yes, the...
...be active as well?
Yes, the school, there will always be a staff member there to make sure the drop-off is managed, you know, so they're not, just leaving, you know, no one's dropping off their kids on the side, and then the kids are walking by themselves.
That's not controlled?
No.
But I mean, even if a parent is dropping off a kid, there would be someone super mic...
Yes, there will be someone super mic on the drop-off and pickups.
Parents not blocking, or...
Yes, yes.
Great, and we have no speakers? We thank you very much for your presentation and your time.
Thank you.
And with that, there's no other items on the table here that will conclude this public hearing, Lady's Public hearing. The next public hearing is scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, same time, same place. Thank you very much.
It's like a two-minute one, that was...
Thank you.
They're close to, like, Red Cross and Sanitarium.
I would think it's close by, but I can't think of my head.
Because Atlas is like eight, it's eight thousand rather than this.
Yeah.
They're across from the Sanitarium. Two, three, four, one.
Thanks. Thanks. We've got a long-time advertiser, so.
Can you, Miller, please, just go ahead?
Oh. Take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
I took it, yeah, I don't know why it stayed up on the screen.
I don't know. It's okay, we'll take your thing.
Thank you.
It was kind of late yesterday, I didn't do something for her.
I know that's... Anyway, I'll make a card. Send a public hearing.
Same chair, I'm going to use the same chair.
Did you take any chairs out?
I took one chair, it was there.
Oh.
It was kind of late yesterday, I didn't do something.
Um, I know that's. Anyway, I'll make a card.
Same thing, I didn't want to say it was.
Did you take any chairs out?
Um, I took one chair, it was there.
Oh. Okay.
Our measles are multiplying again.
There's four now.